Mr. Kuzmaursky, attendees are coming in right now. We have 11 participating currently from remotely. Please begin the meeting when you're ready.
Great, thank you so much. This meeting of the Mala Board of Education is open to members of the public to be physically present. Members of the public that attend will be asked to follow the same procedures as all other visitors to our schools. Those procedures can be found on the Agenda page of our website. Additionally, the board meeting will be livestreamed for viewing purposes only. Anyone wishing to view the meeting may do so via Zoom. The webinar ID for this meeting is 836-353-1006. Sorry, 10006. And the required password is 721710. To allow for adequate distancing, the meeting location has been changed to the Mala High School Auditorium, 50 Ridge Road. Mr. Bleeker, roll call please.
Dr. Morthee. Dr. Park.
Here.
Ms. Secon.
Here.
Mr. Copeland.
Here.
Mr. De Silva.
Here.
Mr. Denise.
Here.
Mr. Gallo.
Here.
Ms. Conoco.
Here.
Mr. Kuzmaursky.
Here.
Adequate notice of agenda of this meeting is provided. The Ridgewood News and the Record specifying that Mala Board of Education will meet on May 5, 2021, in the Mala High School Auditorium, 50 Ridge Road, Mala, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the Township Clerk. Please rise for a salute to the flag. Ms. Secon, will you please lead us? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As the Agenda does list two executive sessions, we will be moving the contents of Item 5 to the end of the meeting, as we have a lot of guests here this evening. Great to see everyone. Next up, Agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions on a new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you were asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. May I please have a motion to open the meeting to the public? Mr. De Silva, seconded by Ms. Conoco. Anyone with Agenda questions? All right, seeing none, can I please have a motion to close the meeting to the public? Ms. Denise, seconded by Ms. Conoco. Dr. Fitz, do you have a report?
Yes, I do have one. Yes, I do have a report. I want to take the liberty of reading a statement sent by one of our parents. I think it makes a profound statement about what the school district is all about and what the hard work that is being carried out by employees in the district. Dear Dr. Fitz, I'm a proud parent of a MHS junior and a 2017 MHS graduate. I'm writing to thank you and your team for the incredible communications over the past school year. Your letters are informative, educational, delightful, down-to-earth, and full of heart and soul. I've especially enjoyed your letters about History and Heritage Month, and your Teacher Appreciation Day letter was extra special since my daughter is graduating from college with an elementary education degree. Who knew it would be so nice to read about snow days? Thank you for adding joy to a difficult year for you. Kind regards, Daine Hunstein. I read this letter because it's reflective of the team and the work that they do. I'm only the recipient of getting the letter. It's the team that I have the joy and the pleasure of working with, and we work thoroughly to make sure that we can provide the best and the finest to this community, to children, and to families. It's also supported by a strong board that keep us focused, challenge us to do the best and to do the finest. So I'm thankful and grateful to have the opportunity to work with just a great team, a great group of citizens, and a great community to be in. We continue our work in the district because the challenges are still ahead of us. We've got to deal with the closing of school while at the same time we've got to deal with the opening of school. So this team is busy putting together comprehensive plans and details and thinking them through in terms of how to test them out, to see if they are viable and if they will get the results that we would like to get for you. So these teams, this work is very comprehensive, it's very detailed, and at the same time we're trying to look at what are we going to do during the summer, what will our summer initiatives look like? Will we have boot camps and other activities for children? So we're in the planning mode, the development mode, and trying to think through all of the issues that confront us. But I want to say to you as a community, continue to share your observations with us. They help us to guide us in our thinking and to guide us in our planning while we sift through all of the information that's coming from multiple sources and we check it for accuracy, timeliness, and the value that it can bring to the school district. But tonight I want also to tell you about another portion of my experience. I had the opportunity to zoom in with 14 leaders in this school community, students. Three of them are seniors that will be departing. Others are juniors and seniors and sophomores, and they are an incredible group. I hope you get a chance to meet them. They are the future leaders for this school in terms of helping you to develop activities for them. The three students that I had a chance to talk to that's going on to college, they have fulfilled their requirements here and they're going to some outstanding universities. One is going up to Cornell, another one is going to Syracuse, and another one is headed to Brown. Those are no low-end schools, believe me. So they are really ready to be challenged, and you as a community, as a group of faculty members and parents should be very proud. We also have a large audience tonight that you'll be hearing more about. I won't talk about them.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Bleeker.
Yes, good evening. I have a handful of items to report on this evening. Before I get to the Agenda, two other items for the benefit of any members, for any attendees that are joining online, community members. There were two items that were added to the Agenda after it was posted online. Those are Agenda Items 17M and 17N. I'll read those into the Agenda for the benefit of those participating online. Appointment, leave replacement adjustment. Resolve that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of Schools. The Mala Board of Education approves the appointment adjustment of Irene Lar as leave replacement for employee number 5700 pursuant to New Jersey State Statute 18A:16-1.1. Effective retroactive April 15, 2021 to May 14, 2021. Salary should be Column D, Step 10, prorated. FMLA Leave of Absence Adjustment. Resolve that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of Schools. The Mala Board of Education approves a leave of absence adjustment for employee number 5700, effective retroactive on April 19, 2021 to April 30, 2021, using 26 days in FMLA concurrently from April 19, 2021 to May 14, 2021. Another item I have to report on before I speak about the budget for next year is the election for next year. Details on running for board member seats, if any community members are interested, have been released by New Jersey School Board Association. They're going to be posted on our district website by the end of the week. Two important dates to keep in mind for that. The election date this year is Tuesday, November 2, 2021. And for anybody who might be interested, if they want to submit a petition to be on the board, July 26, 2021, 4:00 p.m., a petition needs to be submitted to the County Clerk's Office in Hackensack. Again, info on our website will be posted later this week. With that, I have a budget presentation for this evening. For anybody that's been with us for the last couple of meetings, this is the fourth presentation and the last for the 2122 school budget. What we've been doing the last couple of meetings is speaking about different pieces of the budget. Tonight is going to be a summary, and after this, the budget will be adopted for the 2120 school year, and everything necessary will be sent down to the county office as well as the township offices for their records. Going back to our first meeting that we had, this is a review of the revenue that is anticipated for the 2122 school year. The majority of our revenue comes by way of tax levy. This supports both our operating and debt service accounts. I'll speak a little bit more about debt service later on. $67,769,621 is estimated. We have estimated state aid of just under $3.6 million. Other revenue and fund balance make up the other significant components of the revenue stream. Special revenue, which again I'll speak a little bit later on, is specific to federal and state grants that we receive. And then we're anticipating withdrawal from our capital reserve account of $2.8 million to support four potential capital projects that we're going to begin and undertake in the 2122 school year. The tax impact for this, two items that we use to determine the tax impact is the net valuation taxable from the town. The Township of Mala has a net valuation of just under $5.8 billion. We also use the average value of a home in Mala, which for the 2021 year is $477,313. This, along with the tax levy impact that I discussed on the slide previous, suggests a tax impact for the 2021 year of $1,161 for every $100,000 of value in your home. It represents a $22.40 increase from the prior year. And for the average home, as mentioned above, of $477,000, it represents approximately Enrollment is a factor that we use when developing the budget for the year. We always take a look at the October 2020 enrollment. That's usually the good basis in year-over-year enrollment. Also aligns with some state enrollment reports that we need to submit. For the October 2020 enrollment, we had 2,739 students in the district. This does not include any out-of-district students that we have. The breakdown of those 2,739 students is pre-K5, 1,153, grades 6 through 8, 683, and grades 9 through 12, 903. Debt service is one of the major funds within our budget. This is a dedicated fund for the payment of any principal and interest on bonds that are currently outstanding. The district has two bonds that are outstanding, and for the 2122 school year, we're going to be making payments of $1,473,757, again representing principal and interest. These bonds were approved by voters of the Township through referendum in 2002 and 2003, and they're both refinanced in 2009 and 2011. The 2002 bond issue was for the building of Len P. Meadows School, and the 2003 issue was for major renovations at both Grand Paul Ridge and Mala High School. Special revenue is another dedicated fund, just for the accounting of any federal and state dollars that we receive. For next year, the 2122 school year, we're anticipating $738,500 of funds from the federal government, representing IDA funds and any ESSA, formerly called the NCLB or Title Funds. We also received some funding from the state that we are the holders for that go to non-public schools within our district. Total anticipated for the 2122 school year is $755,300. Another item that's going to be in the special revenue is, or accounted in the special revenue fund, is any funds that we receive for CARES or ESER, funds directly given to the district, flowed to the district from the federal government for any relief for coronavirus. Out-of-district costs, the largest piece of out-of-district costs are students who attend a tuition-based school. These represent special ed students who attend either a private school for the disabled, Burton County Special Services, or a public school, as determined by their IEP in consultation with case manager. It also represents about 50 students, grades 9 through 12, who attend Burton County Technical and Vocational Schools or Burton County Academies. Total anticipated tuition budget for next year is $6,319,227. And along with the costs for the tuition, there's of course transportation costs as well that the district absorbs of $22,44,944. Employee benefits is another large piece of the budget pie. Contractual benefits, health benefits, prescription, dental, and workman's comp, all are included within the employee benefits category. For the 2122 school year, the budget is approximately 15% of the overall budget, just over $11 2122 staffing, probably the largest piece of the budget pie. Just under $38 million for next year is what we have budgeted, approximately 51.8% of the total budget. Just under 500 staff, and it represents... Pardon me. As I was saying, for staffing, this represents three collective bargaining associations, the Mala Education Association, Mala Administrators Association, Mala Supervisors Association, and then any other staff who are covered under an independent contract, as well as our power professionals. Staffing, as we said, we look at this very thoroughly every year to budget the best educational curriculum enrollment needs of the district. For the 2122 school year, as reported previously, we are anticipating a net decrease of three positions in the district. I wanted to end on the last slide, just a brief thank you. The budget process is one that begins really back in October, when we begin to start to look at what the impacts are going to be for the next school year, working with the secretaries, working with teachers to develop their classroom budgets for next year, principals for their schools, child study team members, looking at students who may be attending out-of-district schooling for next year. So just wanted to take a moment to really thank and recognize all the different people who participate in the budget planning process, Finance Facility Committee, and of course those in the Business Office. Thank you very much. Any questions for members of the board? Thank you.
No, thank you, Mr. Bleeker. Hold on one second. Spare with us. Thanks.
People at home are definitely able to teach these things. Getting close about them.
Okay. All right, moving along. Mr. Fair, you have a report?
Yes, I do. I guess we'll start with the presentation, and then I will address some items from the Kyle, do you have the clicker? Or... Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. So this evening, we're going to give a brief update on how Phase 2 is going to the board and the public, as well as some additional preliminary thoughts on Phase 3 and Phase 4. It's clear that our teachers are working really hard, our administrators are working really hard, our students here are working really hard, and we're excited about it being a success. So we introduced in this week, as of this past Monday, snack to the secondary level. We're providing students with the opportunity for nutritious nourishment for approximately five minutes during student study hall periods, and those study halls take place in the Library Media Center or the cafeteria. Obviously, with everything else that we've been practicing throughout the duration of this school year, is we've been maintaining social distancing during snack. And we're also exploring opportunities for outdoor study hall for students to have snack At the high school, too, we are introducing snack. The students have the option of, the opportunity of having a snack, starting this past Monday, during their physical education class for a short period of time, approximately five minutes. They're given a break between their double lab periods, their science periods, or during their Option 2 physical education period. If students don't have any of those options midday, we are also providing students with the opportunity, at the end of Time Block 4, to step outside in the courtyard or the pathway towards the STEAM lab to have a snack. And again, snacking is not required. So I know that there are some parents who have reached out asking if it is required, and it is not.
At the last board meeting, we spoke about how we were proud of the movement that we've had as a district going from Phase 1 to Phase 2. We also talked about how we've been proactive in planning for Phase 3 and what that Phase 3 really looks like. At the last board meeting, we promised to start to gather information, which we have. We reached out to a number of different districts. Some of the districts we spoke to are Ramsey, Paramus, Wayne, Beckton Regional, Glen Rock, Wycoff, West, Milford, and Ridgewood, just to gather some information on what they are doing, what their plan of attack is for this year. You know, all of their ideas really span the spectrum. Even though there have been some advertisements of lunch in those schools, it really ranges. And that range really consists of, there's not a K-12 plan in place. Oftentimes, they'll have a secondary model, or they'll have an elementary model. Within that secondary model, there's some variations. That would look like having open campus and having all the kids go home if they would like to. We also talked to them about the number and the population that they have in the schools. So all those things are being taken into account as we start to plan for our Phase 3. We also engaged our teaching staff and representatives from the elementary and secondary positions, and they gave us some great insight on really what's working right now, what are some things to consider, and all these things are going to be put in as we continue to plan. Kyle and his team have engaged a pontonian to start to talk through what that would look like. So please know all this is in the works. As it pertains to timeline, to speak to Mr. Copeland's question from last meeting, we don't have a timeline as of right now. Right now, our hope is that we can pilot it at some time this year. And the reason why we think it's very important to pilot it this year is because, as we said at a number of different meetings, our plan, our goal, is to come back in September, full day, all in, inclusive of lunch. The goal is to really learn and understand the dynamics of creating that space, doing it the right way. We're very proud of all of the efforts that we had to have a successful Phase 1 and Phase 2, and our expectation is Phase 3 is going to be just as successful. So all of that work is happening as we speak. This is something that's very important to all of us. As we said from the beginning, we wanted this year to be special for our students. We know that last year was a challenge, especially the back end of last year, and as much as administration was creative, we're creative and committed to doing something special, we know that it was different. And we felt that we needed to start planning this early to make sure that we can maintain a sense of normalcy or to the best of our abilities for our students. That being said, this is a K-12 focus. This is not just about one grade or another. At every single school, at every single grade level, there are special moments at the end of the year, and we feel it's very important for us to acknowledge those special moments. And those special moments range from clapouts to field days, to moving up ceremonies, to graduations, to dances. All those things are being discussed right now. Please know that the administration is committed to doing their very best to obviously follow the guidelines that have been set forth, but making sure that our kids enjoy their end-of-the-year activities. They've earned it, and we're going to do our very best to maintain that sense of normalcy. So the planning has happened for the past couple of weeks, and we'll continue to plan. The communication is starting to come out. I know that conversations are happening at the HSO meetings, and they will continue to happen, but please rest assured that the administration, as well as the teacher leaders that are partnering with the administration, are very focused to make sure that special moments will be had by our K-12 students. Oh, and what I don't want to forget is, what's very important to us is that our fully remote students will be included in every single experience that happens at the school level. We want them to understand that they are a part of us. They will continue to be a part of us, and we obviously want to welcome them to every single one that they feel comfortable being a part of. Also, Ms. Boney has been working with the elementary teachers to start to create activities back at the school level, happening outside, whether it's read-alouds or games or activities that the kids can start to come back to the schools, obviously outside, and enjoy themselves and feel connected to our schools. Last but not least, last meeting, we spoke about the summer programs. We have been focused on making sure that we're building our bank of teachers and directors to run these programs. So the postings went out immediately after the last meeting. We are closing those postings this week. Once we identify who the directors are and the teachers are, there's going to be communication going out to the families. We totally understand that time is of the essence. We are working as quickly as possible to make sure that the parents are aware of what's offered. We did send out a save the date last week or two weeks ago. I'm sorry, all the days are running together now. But the save the date did include the dates that you see posted up here. Just for the record, just to let me give you a quick rundown, that booster program, it was our traditional summer school program that's going to be run for our students who need that foundational support. We really want to reimagine that program and really create those problem-based exploratory experiences to really enhance that educational experience and build those foundational skills. The boot camp experience, even though on there the timeline is 6:28 to 7:23, that's actually two, two-week cycles. So a student will be able to take part in one, two-week cycle. That's going to be a K to 8 offering. Within that cycle, the teachers are going to identify for ELA and math, the major themes for the year, and they'll be covering them to really just continue to enhance those understandings from the year. That's going to be open to all. Last but not least, we have partnered with a company called Camp Invention. They will be working with our own teachers to provide a week-long, full-day STEAM experience. There'll be five different categories that they're going to take part in. I'm very excited about this offering, especially since this is something that's been proven in other districts. The content is exciting. It's something that gives our students access to the STEAM experience, which is completely aligned to our strategic plan and how we want to really grow those well-rounded students. And last but not least, they'll have friendly faces that are going to be delivering this content, being that it's going to be our teachers that are going to be delivering. So we're very excited about it. We greatly appreciate everyone's patience. More than anything, we're very proud that we were able to develop these programs. Now, the caveat is, we want to make sure that we're able to staff those programs. So that's something that we're building right now. So we have the full court press out to try to gather as many teachers who are interested as possible, because as you can see, there's a lot of offerings there. So we're hoping to be able to staff each and every experience to ensure that our students not only learn during our school year, but it extends beyond. So we're very proud of that.
Thank you.
And we've had some members of our community ask us about the difference between Phase 3 and what we referenced as Phase 4, our reopening in September. As Dr. D'Fiore shared, our goal is to pilot what a lunch experience could look like in our schools prior to the end of this school year. And Phase 4 is really going to be dependent on guidance from the New Jersey Department of Education, the CDC, as well as the Department of Health. I think at that point, we are awaiting that guidance. We believe we will get that guidance at some point over the summer, and we will have some more exactness for the community and for the Board of Education. And lastly, I just want to echo what Mr. Copeland had shared at the last Board of Education meeting, which was really the premise and the importance of, you know, our theme, which is #MalaConnects, the importance of respectful discourse and conversation that's amongst all of us, to our administrators, to our teachers, and each other. Because it's not just our theme, it's something that we really mean and believe in. So I just want to emphasize that because I believe it's a really important part of who we are in Mala. So that's our Phase 3. So that's our phase three, phase four, phase two update. There are some agenda items I would like to address or highlight for the board and the community as well. We have a retirement for Agenda Item 18A. Ms. Jackie Patti, who is an instructional paraprofessional currently at Joyce Kilmer School. She has served 12 years in our district, and she's fulfilled a number of different roles here in Mawa. Most recently, Ms. Patty was committed to supporting students at JK for the last two years, both in the classroom and serving as an assistant to the library media specialist. In this role, she played part in ensuring JK students had regular and consistent access to literacy materials via the media center. We will miss Ms. Patty's nurturing spirit and wish her well in her future endeavors in her retirement. Congratulations to Ms. Patty. Dr. Fitz read an email from a parent who highlighted the written communications that are going out, and that particular email, I was copied on that, and I was able to respond to that parent because that email did mean a lot. I just wanted to highlight one piece from our teacher appreciation letter. Teacher Appreciation Day was yesterday, May 4th, and this whole week is Teacher Appreciation Week. But there's a part in the letter I wanted to highlight. Note that the extra effort you give to a lesson has potentially changed how your students see the world around them. Know that the extra effort of time you have given to a student has potentially changed how those students see themselves in that world. There is no greater joy than making a student feel worthy and believed in. I feel like that is really the thesis for our work every single day when we pull into our parking lot. And I often think about the teachers that made a difference to me, and it wasn't just the lessons, it was often the commentary of Dennis, you did a great job, and that meant the world to me. So thank you to our teachers. We have School Nurses Day, which is next week, May 12th, which we will, at our next board meeting, we will be highlighting our in-house heroes. So we have invited our school nurses, we invite our community to celebrate our school nurses with us, particularly this year. We will be inviting some community members and staff members who help secure vaccinations for our employees, and we will also be inviting parent volunteers who really assisted us in securing technology for some of our students who need it the most. So we're excited to celebrate everyone at the May 26 meeting that will be taking place right here in this auditorium. Lastly, we are in the height of hiring season, so you'll see on tonight's agenda, we have some really exciting appointments, and we will have a lot of appointments in the next board agenda. So thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you very much. All right, President's Report. On that note, I'll start off by thanking the central administrative staff, as are our building principals supervisors for all of the interviews and hiring they are doing. It's an enormous task and a crunch timeline to get it all to us so we can hire them prior to this school year, so we thank you for that. Want to jump into, real quick, the traffic signal update. I did have an update at the last meeting, and I spoke too soon. The gears of government sometimes go a little slower than we like. But tomorrow at 7:00 AM, someone from the Township Engineer will be sitting outside in front of the high school, basically counting cars and lefts and rights and doing a traffic study. Tomorrow night at the council meeting, the engineer will have an update with regards to the recommendations for re-timing that signal and trying to give some relief. I see Councilman Ferguson out there clapping his hands, as I hear from him all the time. So hopefully, there'll be some relief coming to the way of the parents in the morning and afternoon, and those driving up and down the road in the evening hours with unnecessary red lights. After that, it is Teacher Appreciation Week, and we would be remiss if, and I'm sure Brett will have something to say, but I, you know, just from a board perspective, I just wanted to say how grateful we are for all of our teachers in this district. In the past year, they have gone to some crazy lengths to keep it all going. And in some instances, kind of reinvented public education for the first time, probably in 100 years. And but what it really comes down to is just, it's the core of it. It's not the technology, it's not, you know, how we Zoom or communicate, it's their love of their profession, it's the love of the kids, and it just comes through in whatever environment they're in. So if you have a moment this week, remember to thank your teacher, your child teacher, and anyone you see, because they've really done an amazing job. On that note, we have, I see a lot of young Thunderbirds here tonight, very exciting. Probably the most people we've had at a board meeting in probably a year and a half, and for good reason. These kids have done an amazing thing. So led by Ms. Sue Vanderpile, JK Media Specialist for Project Challenge 5th grade. They were in a stock market challenge, and I'm going to read off their names, and if they could stand up and be recognized, and we'll get into what they did. They are Charlotte Ferguson, Divya Thumala, Ashani Desai, Lauren Frump, Maggie Saridi, Lucas Walsh, Thomas Antonelli, David Klein, Ayann Katib, Elizabeth Klein, Francie Green, Alina, Dana Alina, sorry, Colin Broderick, Leota Scala, Arinta, oh, excuse me, Halan Valu, that's even not even close, I'm so sorry, Liam Ventfield, and Konstantin Toscanos. So these students were given the task to invest $100,000 in the stock market. For 12 weeks, they researched companies, observed trends, analyzed markets, bought and sold stock in order to make a profit. They competed against 19 other schools, including middle and high school in the Northeast region. Overall, Joyce Kilmer placed fourth in the entire competition, being beat out by only three other high schools, and taking first place in the elementary division of the stock market game. Within the competition, 60 teams competed against each other, and we are proud to share that five of our Joyce Kilmer students placed in the top 10 of having the highest returns on their investments. So with that, we have Elizabeth Klein placed 10th with a profit of $7,378. Elena Guyanelle placed 7th with a return on investment of $9,095. Francie Green took 6th place with $9,840 over 12 weeks. Maggie Sarakido took 5th place with $10,547. And last but not least, a class of 93 graduate son, Konstantin Toscanos, took 1st place out of 60 teams competing, hold on, competing against high school students with $47,119. That's an amazing job. We're just so proud of all of you and representing Mawa and Joyce Kilmer and yourself so well, and thank you so much. That's amazing. Thank you. So that's all I got for my President's Report. Thank you again. All right, Board Committee Reports. Mr. Gallo, I'm doing it for the regime.
I have, I just, for financing facilities, I just want to thank Kyle and all the staff that participated in developing this year's budget. Again, we were under our allowable tax cap, and yet we continue to fund a broad array of programs that benefit our students. For negotiations, I would highlight Items 17G and H, which are three-year agreements with our administrators' union and with our supervisors' union. We were able to bring a conclusion to those negotiations in the last few days, and they are on the board agenda today for ratification. I want to thank all those involved in that process, including my negotiation committee members and the staff members who represented the administrators and the supervisors. And just sort of, and add-on to our Project Challenge folks, we have a lot of money in places in our district that are left over from the gala of 1969. We have a scholarship fund. Unfortunately, the state of New Jersey shackles us in our ability to invest those funds. But if these kids were unleashed on that money, we would be extraordinarily wealthy. And it was a tremendous achievement for the Project Challenge team. It was wonderful. $37,000 in 12 weeks on 100,000 bucks. I should be sending my 401K money to that kid. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much.
No mention of Bitcoin, by the way.
No. Any other Board Committee Reports? Mr. Copeland.
Okay, Community Corner Time. This Sunday is Mother's Day. Our Interact and Leo Clubs partner with Oasis and Patterson to help treat 200 women to gift bags meant to pamper mom. These deserving women will be celebrated at luncheon on Sunday, so thank you to those two clubs for helping Patterson out. And did you know, more phone calls are made on Mother's Day than any other day of the year. Those calls often cause phone traffic to spike as much as 37% on that one day. That was kind of, okay, maybe not a cool idea, but whatever. Today's Cinco de Mayo. Today commemorates the Mexican Army's victory over the French Empire on May 5, 1862. In America, we celebrate by generating beer sales on par with the Super Bowl, but in Mexico, celebrations are mostly ceremonial, such as military parades or battle reenactments. As been mentioned already, this is Teacher's Appreciation Week, and I just want to thank you all of our teachers for nurturing, educating, inspiring our students, and helping them reach their full potential. Excuse me. Yesterday was International Firefighters' Day. To every firefighter, including our very own business administrator, we thank you for your extraordinary commitment, exceptional courage, and for your selfless service. When others are running from the fire, you run towards the fire, and for that, we are eternally grateful. The Mala Municipal Alliance is hosting a Zoom presentation on legalization of cannabis on May 17th. You can find more info on their website, malaalliance.org. Congratulations to our girls golf senior captain Jenna Han, who's also heading to Annapolis after she graduates, for winning the 2021 Big North Championship with an even par 70, and Jordan, excuse me, junior Jordan Klein for her second-place finish with a 2 over 72. It's pretty impressive. Last but not least, today is World Maths Day. Since its founding in 2007, the popularity of World Maths Day has multiplied fast. Did I do that? The day encourages students globally to take a break from the standard day-to-day math lessons and participate in online math-themed games centered around mental math problems. Also wanted to express my deepest condolences to the Morthee family on the loss of Jay's mother. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right, Board Member Remarks? Additional comments? Anyone? Mr. Gallo.
Thanks to Linda Ziccone for organizing sort of a last-minute visit to Betsy Ross today. Just at the end of school, we had an opportunity to visit Betsy Ross for a few minutes and just see the extraordinary space that our students have over there for learning. I was particularly interested in the new outdoor learning center, which is extraordinary. They have 13 raised-bed gardens that are going in, and eventually, they'll be growing food for our future culinary program. But it's, I just compare, again, I'm an old fogey, I just compare the types of facilities that our students have exposure to. It's an incredible amount of learning experiences that are built into our classrooms, and especially this year in the pandemic. Dr. Bavino was very careful to point out all the safety measures, which were very unobtrusive, I thought. But it's just another sign of the investment the community's been making in education from a facility and infrastructure standpoint. And I just wanted to thank the Betsy Ross staff for giving us their time on the tour today. I don't know if Linda wanted that.
You wouldn't know there was a pandemic going on while you're walking through these classrooms. School is proceeding as normally as possible. The students' work was hanging up all over the rooms, and it was just a pleasure to see.
Great, thank you. Any other Board Member Remarks? Mr. Copeland.
Forgot one thing. If you haven't seen it yet, Chris Raggy made a visit, special visit over to GW, I think it was yesterday or the day before, and filmed a little bit, a segment for CBS2 News, so check it out. It was great to see the third graders in the multipurpose room all together and being celebrated for their, I think it was some kind of news, some news casting that some of the students have been doing at GW. Yeah, it was pretty cool. If you haven't seen the videos, they're really, really well done. So yeah, congratulations to those students, and thanks, and thank you to Chris for taking some time out of his day to see them.
As always. Thank you so much. Anyone else? All right, so now, moving on to old business, we have Minutes of April 21st, 2021. Can I get a motion, please? Mr. Gallo, seconded by Ms. Conoco. Yep? Dr. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Ziccone.
Yes.
Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Ms. Conoco.
Yes.
And Mr. Kazmarski.
Yes.
All right, new business. We have Agenda Items A through P. Can I please get a motion? Anyone? Anyone want to make a motion on A through P? Mr. Denise? And Mr. Gallo? Oh, you guys are going to leave me hanging, lads. Oof. Almost didn't have a budget. Yes, roll call, please. Almost. Dr. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Ziccone.
Yes.
Mr. Copeland.
Yes, but I'm abstaining on check number 102516.
Thank you. Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes, except I'm abstaining in 17B on check number 102505 and 102555.
Thank you. Ms. Conoco.
Yes.
And Mr. Kazmarski.
Yes.
Item 18, new business and personnel. We have Items A through FF. Can I please get a motion? Mr. Gallo, seconded by Dr. Park.
I'd like to just make a quick comment.
Sure thing.
I really want to thank all the staff involved in the development of the summer programs. Not only are we doing what we did before, we're reimagining what we did before. So it wasn't just like they, they're taking something out of the box and just reopening it again. This is a whole rethink of summer. In a year that's been challenging for everyone, the summer program is a robust, comprehensive, interesting, and experience for our students, and I want to thank everybody who's involved in putting it together. That applies to 18Z through 18EE.
On that, I'm very excited to see Safety Town coming back this year. So some sense of normalcy here, so it's good. All right. Dr. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Ziccone.
Yes.
Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Ms. Conoco.
Yes.
And Mr. Kazmarski.
Yes.
All right, public questions are common. Public participation at board meetings according to bylaw 0167. At this time, members of the public may ask questions or make comment on educational issues or school matters of community interest. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. May I please get a motion to open the meeting to the public? Mr. De Silva, seconded by Ms. Ziccone. All right, any member of the public?
Phil Ross, One Man Road, obviously in Mawa. Yeah, I know everyone, you know, is here, the betterment of the children, and I saw the PowerPoint presentation, but one of the things I have a question about, my daughter is not in middle school yet, but I see what's being bandied about regarding snack time at the middle school. I didn't see it posted up there, but I've seen it posted online, I just wanted to, I wanted to get it from the board. What's going on with that? What's the policy of people making children take their mask down, eat, put food in the mouth, and put the mask back up? Is that, is that what's going on?
Okay. Want to take that one?
Sure. Essentially, they're having a snack. We're trying to make it a discreet experience because masks are required, so it's a brief opportunity to have a snack. So it's mask, snack, mask.
We're trying to make it a discreet experience because masks are required. So, it's, it's a brief opportunity to have a snack. So, it's mask, snack, mask.
Okay. What's the science and data behind that?
With regards to what exactly?
With regards to taking a mask off, eating, and putting it back on. Where is, is there any data that's saying that this is necessary, considering that we are observing social distance, considering that we did get these partitions? Are we utilizing those now, using social distance? Then what, I mean, this is stressing a lot of people out, okay? This is making the snack not really viable for the people. So, what is the science? What is the data behind taking the mask off? Because once, if you're, if you're using a mask to prevent the spread of anything, once you take it down, game's over. If it's contagious, or if you are contagious. Well, so what, I want to know what?
Well, the New Jersey Department of Education guidance requires masks.
But where, where's the, where's the data that is backing up this mandate?
That's a question for the Department of Health.
Oh, in terms of masks?
You know, in terms of masks during a snack, you have, you have, you have observed social distance, yes? So, the edict says you have social distance or wearing a mask. Now, if you're social distance, why are we putting the stress on these children to, to have to hold a mask down, put up, I mean, if you're constantly touching a mask too, it's not, it's also not recon. So, we're kind of being counterintuitive here. I just wanted to know where's the data, where's the?
So, along the lines of data and science, what's happening right now is this is the first time that we're introducing foods into the schools. So, the most important thing for us to do is to do it as intelligently as possible. So, we just introduced snack a couple of weeks ago at the elementary level, which has been successful, which we're happy about. And now, we're doing it at the secondary level. So, now that it's, I think this is day three that we're doing it at the secondary level. And because there's such a high volume of students, we want to make sure that we're doing this right. That being said, that I think building specific questions, you probably can get the best answer from that principal. So, in, within the Ridge, there are a couple of different spaces that they're having snacks. So, they're having snack in the cafeteria, they're having snack in the media center, I believe, and they're having snack outside. So, depending on the location, they're trying to work within their means to intelligently introduce food the right way. So, along the lines of the science, the only science we can go with is what the CDC has shared and what the New Jersey Department of Ed has shared. So, within that, they, they talk about distance, which we're, we're working on and making sure that we're doing and doing it safely. They talk about anytime you drop your mask, you're susceptible to the particles in the air. So, here's the thing. No matter what, there's always going to be people who are concerned one side or concerned the other side. And with this part of our path and process, we're, we're learning. And we're doing the best that we can with what we have. And when you're starting to talk about having students, 700 students at the Ridge, 900 students at the high school, starting to eat, I'd rather be more cautious than not. And then, once we start to refine that practice, we'll start to pare down if we feel that pare down, pairing down is necessary. But the celebration of integrating foods into the schools is an important one. But like I said, the specificity of exactly what snack looks like, Mr. Corey, I'm sure will be able to talk you through in each location, this is what it looks like, sounds like, and feels like. And then also, as we go in and we start to look at, is it working or it's not? We'll make modifications accordingly.
Well, I know in the elementary school, JK, my daughter's been having snack. There's been no issue with the, they have their masks off, snack. And I'm just wondering why there's a difference when you're abiding by social distance. And as far as I know, that's up to each district to put forth whatever rules that they want.
Sure.
And I wonder, I mean, like, if we're going to make a decision, let's at least have some data behind it, let's have some science. Because this is not based on science.
There's, there's two significant differences between elementary and secondary. At the elementary level, you have students that don't exceed, let's say, 20 students in a space. At the secondary level, especially specifically at the, at the Ridge, you have upwards of 60 to 70 students in a space. And obviously, with that increase of students, we want to make sure that we're doing it the right way. So, along the lines, like you said, go back to science, the only thing that can guide us is what has been published by the Department of Ed, I mean, Department of Health and CDC. But like I said, now, every step that we've taken, we've tried to be cautious and informed. Now that we've stepped into the foods in the school, which I know there have been a large number of people who want it, us included, because we want to return to our full day with lunch included. I think it's really important for us to do it incrementally. And like I said, now, there's going to be more information given to you by the building principal, and that building principal will be able to talk to you about the specificity of each, each location.
Yeah, again, it's, I know where you're coming from, and I appreciate the caution being reserved. And there's also, you know, as far as wearing masks when the kids are running around in gym class outside, honestly, guys, this is going to be a problem, especially when it gets hotter out and people fall. Someone's going to, someone's going to fall. I used to run fight camps with guys with a training mask, and I used to represent them. I got rid of it because I noticed that the, that the fighters' activity was dropping. And then, there's also a whole bunch of data way prior to COVID on the effect of wearing a mask while training and how it, it changes the chemistry of the blood and actually underperform. That's why I got rid of those. So, this is, people pass out. And this is something, if you're worried about a liability issue, if someone's outside, it's hot and humid, and I run across the field with a mask on, and they pass out, somebody's going to get hurt. This is another point of contention. I really think that it should be thought, it should be some thought applied to it. I'll tell you, my daughter's been playing soccer all year, no mask on field, no issues. Okay, I can just stand by what I've seen and what I've read and my experience. So, you should start thinking this.
So, with each phase and each initiative, as Dr. Torro shared, we are constantly reevaluating. So, the way that we start snack at the elementary school level, it's evolved over time. So, we, we want to see it in practicality, what it looks like, and then we adjust accordingly. That's how we've, that's how we've done Phase 1, Phase 2, and we'll continue to, to follow that suit. And speaking about physical education, I know that there, the, at the Ridge, we're introducing some new activities like golf and badminton that aerobically might not be as intense, right?
Have you ever seen Olympic badminton?
I actually have, I've never seen Olympic badminton, but I'm going to check it out. So, so there's that, there's that piece. And also, I know that lessons, it's my understanding that lessons are designed for students based on, you know, their own pace. So, that's another piece in, in terms of the consideration in moving forward. I know that we are introducing new and more equipment. So, again, this is evolving, and I think we're just getting better at it as, as we, as we proceed forward.
Again, I know that your intentions are good. But let's, there's no reason we can't question things as they come up.
Oh, absolutely.
I just know there's, there's a lot of negative comments being made about the mask wearing during snacks. And a lot of kids are saying, gosh, it's such a hassle, I don't want to do it. So, now, they're not getting the required nourishment. Now, we're going to have a whole nother set of issues.
Yeah, and we're also receiving emails about community members not happy that we have masks in the first place.
Right.
So, we recognize that there are a lot of different opinions, but we are guided by the rule of New Jersey Department of Health guidance. Thank you, appreciate it.
Anyone else from the public, like to make any comments, questions?
How you doing?
Hello?
Lou Theodore. I've been actually talking with Mr. Fair about this exact subject. Good back and forth to echo what Phil is saying. I think what concerns some of the parents is the initial letter that came out about snacking in the Ridge specifically. I don't have a high schooler, but I assume was pretty close, was that the guidance was that the children were to take their mask down, put food in, put their mask back on and chew. The science behind that is very bad, although it might be good intentions. That is going to soil the mask, it's going to wet the mask. And the guidelines that the Department of Education put out specifically say that a wet or soiled mask should be merely discarded. It's a cloth mask should be cleaned. If it's a disposable mask, it should be thrown out and changed. Kind of along the same lines with gym. And, and I appreciate that, especially golf, Dr. Storm is. I appreciate that they're, they're introducing new ways for them to play gym, phys ed, sorry. But they are, my daughter reported that she ran a lap, had trouble at the end of it. She was, I, I shared this with Mr. Fair, catching her breath and was told that there is an area where they could go with, to take their mask off to catch their breath, but only one child at a time. There was already a child there. That's a dangerous situation, a child who, Phil would know. A child who is struggling to catch their breath needs to take the mask off at any time. And actually, the New Jersey Department of Education guidelines allow for that. They specifically allow for masks to be taken off outside during gym if the kids are, are distanced. They allow for masks to be removed inside or outside during high aerobic and anaerobic activities. That's why, for example, rec basketball can be played inside a school facility. So, there is combinations that can be made, you know, whether you guys choose to do it, obviously, it's on you. But there are the guidelines from the New Jersey Department of Education, I've shared this with Mr. Fair, not correctly the first time, I apologize for that. The second time, I think I gave you the right one.
You did, thank you.
So, there are, there are allowances that the New Jersey Department of Education and the CDC guidelines allow the district to take. And we're just asking you to look at that and do as much as you can.
I hear you, thank you.
And happy teacher appreciation day, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other member of the public? Just please. Name an address for the record, please.
Sorry?
Name an address for the record.
Melanie Sue, 13 Grendy Deer Drive. I agree very much with what Lou just said, but I actually want to ask about the summer school program. I did receive an email and I signed up my daughter, but I didn't realize that it hadn't been staffed yet. So, I know if, what are the, what's the likelihood of it not being fully staffed? Because I don't want to disappoint my kids again and tell them that they're going to do something and then?
We will make sure it's staffed.
Okay, okay, there seemed to be some hesitancy earlier, so.
Doctor, if we have to, Dr. Torro and I, Ms. Rizzo, we will, we will be there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hey, had to make a big statement. Hi.
He volunteered, you, he did. I have a napkin, Dr. Torro have a napkin when I was president of the HSO, and it says, "Stop me if I volunteer again." Christine Maranti for Ivy Lane. Question for you and Dr., and Mr. Fair, or you got promoted. The Phase 3 introduction for this year that you're hoping to launch as a pilot, by pilot, do you mean like TV, like one episode one day, we'll see how it goes? Or do you mean from that day forward to the end of the year?
I'd like to start with a TV pilot. Honestly, I think that, you know, one or two episodes, I would like to see, you know, what that looks like and, you know, we can see if we like the show.
So, it wouldn't be an actual phase, it would be a one-off shot?
That's, initially, that's, I think that's what we're looking for right now. And to see what it looks like from there.
And then, will research continue with other schools? Because that's a tough time of year, because now there's nobody in school, because it's summer.
Yep.
Might have to turn that one off.
Along the lines of the, along the lines of the research, the research is not only going to continue now, but will continue through the summer. Because what's happening right now is some schools are coming out and saying, we're going to do it, then they're pulling back. Some schools are coming out, I believe, May 10th. There are some schools that are starting and saying, let's give this a shot. So, we, we have been, like I said, been in contact with those different districts. We're trying to get in to their schools while they're serving lunch to see how their setups, their setups are being. And again, we're going to go through the summer. So, the, the purpose of our, you know, our pilot this year is to really envision what those spaces are going to look like. So, we're not doing that in September. We're identifying what the, the traffic pattern will be internally, no, not to hit sensitive subject, but like really understanding the flow of the food lines and, and being able to break out the, the different grade levels and the scheduling of that, and also the cleaning of in and out. The, the most important piece is, you know, even if we do one or two things this year, I'm sure, you know, luck will have it, that it'll be raining. Because we're going to be hoping that we're going to have the kids eating outside, and that's great, but that's not the way to plan. You can't have a plan that's solely reliant on eating outside. So, there's a lot of factors to answer your question of not only the planning now, but the assessment of when it does take place, and then the planning that goes into the summer. We think that if we, if we're able to get it done this year, it really gives us a great springboard in it in the summer to make sure that we are able to see it in every single space and identify what needs to be addressed. Because at first glance, there are schools that we think will be a lot more successful in taking this on than others. There are other schools that are very tight on space. So, we have to be very strategic with those spaces while still simultaneously running the classes. Because as you know, while lunch is going, the rest of the schools have in class too. So, we don't want to take over a space for an extended period of time, because then that stifles the schedule. So, not to be long-winded, I just wanted to let you know that those are all the things in the scheduling piece of this that we're, we're hyper-focused on and we're working with administration on them.
Great, thank you. Don't sit down. Don't sit down yet. The one opportunity you mentioned, or you mentioned that the elementary schools have less exposure because there are smaller groups of kids when they eat. So, they're in a group of 20 when they're eating, and then they only go in their classroom. They're not circulating classrooms. Is there any way of, or benefit to rescheduling those classes the way they are at the Ridge? Like having a class move around instead of dispersing and mixing the whole grade or the whole team, so that if you're eating with this 20, then that 20 goes here, 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 throughout the eight periods?
Potting the schedule.
Yeah, yeah, it's like similar to the elementary school.
Those are, those are questions that we were looking at over the summer. But just the, the variation of offerings, whether it's the math variations that you look at, like at the elementary level, everybody takes the same subjects.
Yeah.
At the secondary level, that's when they start to splinter out along the lines of class offerings. And of course, at the high school level, it's completely different. So, that potting, which is a beautiful idea, and it really allows for more of a sense of, you know, focus and concentration. At the middle school, there are a lot of different variables that, that really handcuff us from doing that. But we, we're going to try and continue to try our best to, to, to keep as concentrated as possible, but I just can't promise it.
All right, thank you. My next question is regarding the synchronous learning and the virtual learning, the position that was eliminated because of lower enrollment. How without, did that supervisor only affect K to 5? Or was that because they had a separate remote learning experience? And is the loss of that person now going to affect what's happening with any remote experiences for the rest of the year? Because we still have kids being forced to sit out for two weeks after, after any close contact. We still have kids that are, are doing remote for, for full by choice. So, how is that remote experience going to be changed or not with the loss of that position?
This year?
Yeah.
The, the position, I believe the one that you're speaking of is the?
Director, Director of Virtual Learning.
Right. Is only for next year being eliminated?
Yeah, that, that position will be sustained till the end of the year and will continue to oversee that program.
Okay. Next year?
How am I doing so far?
You, you got one more?
Okay.
You're okay? One more question. The, do you envision next year, if there's no remote option, students still coming into the class with the laptop and being taught on a laptop? Or do you see a more integrated, more personal experience? Or are the kids still going to sit there and be learning on the laptop?
At the secondary level?
Yeah, that's.
At the secondary level, and, and we spoke about this, I believe, a little bit last, last week. You know, the laptop can be an amazing tool, but again, it's just a tool, it's not the primary point of instruction. So, next year, without the teachers hopefully not straddling both worlds, it allows them to really create that in-school and digital experience and have a nice balance. So, my expectation is there's going to be a nice balance. balance. It won't be the sole and the primary. It'll be a great tool for extension.
And Mr. Fair had mentioned at one point that if we are required to have a remote option next year by the state, it might look very different. Do we have thoughts on that yet? Is there a chance that we could have a separate remote experience and not have the teachers straddle both stratospheres while in the classroom in person?
Over this past summer, we, we, we went back and forth reviewing all different types of options. I think it's going to be, it's going to depend. I know that's not an answer for you, but a lot of it depends on what the New Jersey Department of Education guidance is for us. And then we would have to reevaluate from there for this upcoming school year.
So nothing yet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Rachel Kirk, 27 Roxbury Road. I just really want to ask you to put yourselves into perspective of the children in Ramapo Ridge. I can't speak for the high school. I don't have a kid there yet, but being timed to eat snack, I'm happy they're eating snack. I, I'm happy about this. This is a fantastic step forward. I want you to just put yourselves in the shoes of the children. Being timed where teachers say you have five minutes to eat and you have to be done, you're pulling your mask up, you're fiddling with the whole thing. It's uncomfortable. These kids have been through so much already. To be treated like this is unfair. To have teachers berating the kids three feet apart, six feet apart. Come on, guys. COVID's real. You, you're asking these kids, you're trying to remind kids that COVID is real. They have lived it. They've experienced it. I know my kids have been to several Zoom funerals. They know it's real. But we have to keep the humanity alive. These are their future. If we want to turn out kids that are confident, capable, productive members of society, we have to start showing that respect to them as well. Respect begets respect. And right now, I feel like we are not demonstrating that at the school. We have to remember they are kids. They are human beings. This is the impression that we're leaving them with. And I really beg you, plead with you, to reconsider how we are doing this. Five minutes on a timer. I really do believe that we could do better than this. I believe the teachers can be a little bit more compassionate and, and fair. And I know the kids will in turn give respect right back. They are good kids, come, all coming from good families who care about them. So please, I just want to leave here reminding you that we love, we all love Mawa. I can't, I left Mawa a few years ago because of my husband's job, and we finally got a chance to come back. And he said, "Where do you want to live?" "Anywhere you want." And I said, "I want to go back to Mawa." And we did. And we are, we're here. I don't regret that decision ever. But I just want us to keep keeping the great Mawa that we are. Kids first. And I know we can do this. I know we could think outside the box. Give those kids more than five minutes and more than just a timer. They're not prisoners. They're not bad people. They are good people trying to carve out a future for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, I can't compete with that, so I'll just start small. Michelle Salzman, 10 Stonewall Court. I just want to clarify a couple of things from earlier, just for myself. So as it stands right now, outdoor gym will remain masked. Is that correct?
I, I believe it is right now, yes.
Okay. So the kids running around, the 80-degree weather, whatever they're doing, they're going to have this mask on?
For right now.
Okay. And if the child has an issue?
I, I think that once we get to June, again, we're, we're right now in early May, I think we would have to reevaluate everything. So for right now, yes.
Okay. So for the month of May, we would keep it going? And then as it gets hotter, we would reevaluate?
I'm just telling you right now, if they're wearing masks.
And I understand they're wearing masks, especially for indoors, I understand that. I don't understand if they're outside and spaced and running why they have to wear masks. That's the part I'm confused. I understand if you're inside that there's a distancing issue.
I hear that.
But outside, I'm a little confused about. I, I don't know where that rule is written. I, I can't find that rule. So if there's a rule somewhere, then I would like to know where it is because, or who's making it. Who makes those decisions?
Districts make the decision. So right now...
That's more of a Mawa decision than a NJ, DOH?
There are many districts.
Oh, no, I don't, I'm not comparing us to other districts. I just want to know who's making that decision for our district.
So it's, it's the district. We are guided by Department of Health guidance. I know that there's additional information that we're going to review, but...
I, I just don't think the Department of Health recommends kids running around in 80-degree weather in a mask. Or the CDC.
The CDC's most recent recommendation relative to outdoor activities, particularly the guidance for summer camp is that students remain masked outdoors, even if one's separate.
Okay.
And that's the guidance that we have.
Okay. And is there a way to get your child out of gym if you don't feel that that's healthy for them?
Yeah, I would, I would speak to your building principal if there's a concern there.
And then also as far as the snack goes, with the lifting up and down for eating, if that's where we are at this moment, how do we anticipate getting to full lunch? Because I think lunch would be a little rough like this and snack is. So what needs to occur between this ridiculousness and eating a sandwich?
I think we have to reevaluate all the time. Like we've been saying, we have been living through phase one, and we sat through phase one at this board meeting where we had people who had concerns on both sides. We made it through phase one. Then we got to phase two. When we started phase two, we sat at the board meeting, we went through a Zoom where people had lots of commentary, right? On both sides. We got through. We are at phase three and we are experiencing the same thing. I, we are asking you to trust us in doing the best for our kids.
Okay. I just wanted to know what needed to happen between now and then.
Quite frankly, we don't know. We are living through this just like you are. We are trying the best that we can.
For the schools that offer lunch, what do they do differently?
A lot of the school districts that have been listed or publicized as having lunch, we've reached out to them and they say, "We've decided not to have lunch."
Okay. I don't know if anyone's having lunch. So no one in New Jersey is really eating lunch right now?
No, I think there are a few that, again, we're going to be reaching out to, to, to see what that looks like. But we've reached out for site visits. When we went to schedule the site visits, districts either said they've, they're no longer going to be having lunch or they're not having lunch. So we're, we're kind of stuck here.
Is there a way that Mawa could be kind of the trailblazer then? Instead of trying to emulate other districts, possibly come up with solutions that work for our demographics and our unique situation instead of trying to copy another district? Is it possible that we could come up with something?
I think that in even piloting lunch in June, we are certainly some of the trailblazers, actually. In, in, we've reached out to, to some districts and they have, they say that they are not touching lunch until next year. So I consider us to be trailblazers in that way. What we mentioned, snack at the secondary level, there are districts, they, that have stated they are not having food in their buildings, period.
So then all these districts are going to be stuck in September, flat-footed, trying to figure this out?
Yes.
Okay. And my last question is regarding vaccinations, both for the teachers and kids. I assume most of the staff is vaccinated by now, the ones that want to be anyway?
I'm not sure on the exact data. Our school nurses have that information.
Okay. Because I mean, we were led to believe that once the vaccinations went through, that a lot of this overcautiousness would be relieved because the teachers are obviously the primary concern, rightly so, which is why they went to the front of the line so they could get vaccinated. So when you're dropping the mask, you know, who are you really protecting, so to speak? Are you protecting the teachers? Are you protecting other students? Who, who are we?
I think both.
If I can just share, as you've seen in the recent communication that's been going out, that the students are supposed to step in. And it's, it's not just the teachers that we're worried about, it's all of our, all of our kids and our staff members. So, you know, we're worried about all. Along the lines of, once the vaccinations have come out, the, the steps that we need to move forward was now we're introducing food. And I totally understand that there's some people who feel like that should be expedited a little bit faster, and I respect that. But along the lines of our, our movement forward, we're excited about the number of staff members that have been vaccinated. It does definitely give us a sense of comfort and calm. We're looking forward to the next stage of whoever's, obviously, the next level of vaccinations. But the foods part, we are moving forward and we're not going to stay stagnant, I can promise you. And that's going to be proof of us really making sure that those pilot days do come to fruition today of this year. And then what, like I said, with the springboard and, and the hope and the promise of September, we're in and we're doing. So just please know that that effort's there.
For vaccinations, do you foresee those being mandatory for students?
I have no idea. Not sure.
Yes, clearly.
Yep. And I think there are a lot of differing opinions on vaccinations also. So I don't know what exactly that will look like.
Okay. And my last question just involves, I think Christine had touched on it last time, all these Zoom ceremonies, which I understand if there's a large group. Just an example, my daughter got inducted into the French Honor Society at the high school. There were eight kids inducted. So it's quite an honor. And we had to do it via Zoom. Now, this is a pretty big room. So I'm wondering why we're not starting, at least with those smaller events, trying to bring the kids together again. I mean, honestly, for me, Zoom is easier. I can sit through my pajamas. But as a kid, and the high school level especially, when they get into these honor societies, you know, it's a pretty big deal for them. So if you're talking eight kids, if both parents came and you throw in the administrators or maybe 30 people, why did that have to be a Zoom event?
I, I, I can't, I totally understand what you're saying. I can't speak specifically to that event, but please note that the administrators at the end-of-year events are doing their best, as best as possible to keep the things on-site together. I, I understand those are special events that obviously families, and like I said, like coming together and celebrating. Obviously, as we continue to move through the year, we're doing our very best to continue to push into the school to have those celebrations live, so we can enjoy them as a collective group. And that's obviously, like I said, those end-of-year experiences, those graduations or moving up ceremonies, the third grade clout outs or the hunk, whatever, you know, we're looking at, we're, we're, we're doing our best to improve.
Well, those are lar, those are larger events.
And Christine, to your point, you're right. Those smaller events need to be our focus and we will continue to talk to administrators about doing our best to have those lives here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I know one was with that one question, but it's something I can...
Come to the microphone, please.
I don't know if it's based on the most recent data about the CDC recommending that people exercising outside wear masks. That is not recommended, and that is not the most recent data. Does not, doesn't not say that. I mean, if I, if I, if you'd like me to bring it up, get it and send it over to you, I most certainly would, but it's there. I mean, there, there's not a recommendation that people should be wearing masks when they're working out outside. That is not a recommendation. I mean, this virus is exceedingly weak. I mean, within, within seconds of exposure to ultraviolet, ultraviolet light dies. So that is not a recommendation. And, you know, ramifications are far worse with exercising the mask on, especially outside in a hot human environment. Hot human environments are the most, are the most detrimental to the human body while working out. And by restricting breathing, you're restricting airflow. You're also, you're also restricting the amount of oxygen that gets exchanged. And that's, that's going to cause issues. That's, that's, it's going to be a problem. I was letting you know, if, if, if you look at the cost-benefit ratio here, well, is someone going to get exposed to COVID or is somebody going to fall down because of the lack of oxygen? This side's going to happen a lot more than this side in this instance, especially working outside. So I just wanted to make that clear. So the, the, the statement is not based on the most recent data. Okay?
Well, thank you very much. Anyone else?
Hi, Christopher Salzman, 10 Stonewall Court. I swear, my wife probably stole one of my questions, but I wanted to, there's been talk of a lot of, you know, outdoor masking with gym. There was a story, actually kind of a uplifting story until the end about an Oregon high school student that actually broke the 800-meter dash or 800-meter race. My wife told me about this because this 800 is rather challenging. She was wearing a mask the whole time, and as she crossed the finish line, she basically fell forward onto her face. Because of that, Oregon relaxed its outdoor competition standards so they don't actually have to do that anymore. All right? Understand what the CDC guidelines have, but one thing we have to make sure we repeat in our heads, guidelines, recommendations. There's kind of an old joke that the NTSB used to have the perfect idea of a car that would keep everyone safe. It's called a tank. It's not practical or realistic. So we have to be able to judge these things. As Phil was saying, the cost-benefit analysis of some of these things. Again, these are kids. They're going to be outdoors. We have to be able to weigh the risk versus not being, there not being any risk. So just please keep that in mind. I like the world trail, I like the world trailblazers. That's good. Want to keep that up. I don't want to be beat up by other districts, Wayne, even Don Bosco, down the street. So as long as we're continuing on that trend, that's a great thing. So understand you guys are working hard to do this. Keep up the good work. We're expecting to continue to see improvements, hopefully in the near term. That's our expectations. All right? Thank you.
Thank you so much. One more. That's it.
Last board meeting, you mentioned Christine Maranti for Ivy Lane. Last board meeting, we mentioned there was a traffic observation. I was wondering if there are any reports back, any modifications, knowledge? Because like shortly after we talked about that, there was an accident on Ridge Road. So anything about the Ridge Road traffic? I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
With regards to the traffic light, we'll have an update tomorrow night, and then we'll have more information going forward. You can tune into the town council meeting tomorrow night. That's where you see that.
Did anyone look at the situation of like pickup at the ridge? I spoke to Mr. Corey about it, but there was other areas that are beyond his control, like the library and then the entrance to JK, the exit of the high school. The traffic is all backing up there and there's children walking. Like that was a specific concern. Is there anything that can be looked at that?
I don't want to say no, but...
Would video from a parent waiting in the line help you get your attention on it?
Hold on. In terms of people, cars lining up along the street, they have to to pick up their children. With regard, you know, with regards to entrance and exit, ingress, egress to the library, you know, it's, it's an opening. People are going to go in and out.
It's not safe the way it's there right now. I know nothing's happened yet, but it's not safe. The kids are afraid to walk. That's too, it's too much asking people that are driving in and out and people pulling in and out while kids are trying to walk the driveway. So what I'm asking is, can we look at it? Can we have another, can we have a crossing guard there? Can we have somebody looking at it? Can we make a right turn only out of the library like they're supposed to be out of the ridge? That's kind of like what I'm asking. Be very happy to take pictures and take video.
No, I don't, I don't not believe you. I've seen it. It's, it's, there's a lot, there's a lot going on there.
What we'll do is we'll speak to Mr. Corey and we'll be along the lines of what's happening at the library. There's only so much that we can cover. So we'll also speak to the police department along the lines of what our scope is and what they can do to help us as well. As you know, during dismissal, there are people who are patient and follow, you know, those safety guidelines. There are also people who are in a hurry and unfortunately, that's unsafe. So we'll go in and identify efficiencies that we can create on our property and then see what we can do outside of scope. Because as you said, there's a, there's a trail that goes down Ridge Road. So we'll take a look to see what we can adjust and what we can't adjust, especially towards the end of the year.
Terrific. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Dineshova Tovich, 68 West Air Mount Road. So my question is about the guidelines around quarantining after travel. So we were one of the families who went away, had to stay, you know, home for the seven to 10 days, et cetera. Just want to give you guys like a, just a, for example, my family, we drove down to Florida. We have a, we happen to be very fortunate. We have a family condo. We stayed there. We're out at the beach. My kids have to stay home for a week. Another family could have gone to Kalahari, stayed in a hotel, gone to an indoor water park. They come home to New Jersey. No quarantine for them. These are guidelines. They're not restrictions set in stone. I really think that we need to consider that, you know, sort of situation, especially when my children were tested Wednesday, they were negative, and then they still had to stay home Thursday and Friday. I know I mentioned this last time. But just the, the, you know, where are we going with that? And my second question is, have you guys talked to Sparta? Because I know Sparta, my girlfriend lives there. They've been in school full days with lunch since I think either the end of March or beginning of April. So...
Thank you. In terms of the quarantine?
Yeah.
You know, we're following that guidance. We will continue to review the guidance.
Okay.
I mean... I mean, we recognize, I mean, literally going to Florida, and we, we, we get that.
Right. But we're still keeping the kids home for seven to 10 days.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Thank you. All right. Can I get a motion to close the meeting in the public? Well, make it really quick, please.